I heard the gavel so she can call.
Oh, okay. All right.
The mayor's not going to be here.
All right. There you go. Yes, 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 all right. That's what's wrong? Okay. All righty. Good evening, council. Residents, I'm pleased to see y'all all here this evening. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Aransas Pass, November 6, 2017, at 6:01. I will now call to order this meeting. Yep, 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 yep. Yes, would you please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance? Yes, Vicki?
Dear Father, we come before you with saddened hearts of the incident that just took place in San Antonio area, my father. We pray for the families that lost loved ones, small children involved, my father. I pray even for the family of the suspect, the shooter, my father. They are going through something rough also. I pray, my Father, that your grace come before our country, that we may turn to you, because you're the one that offer us the healing that we need and to come together as one. We're all as one under your eyes, my father. I pray, my Father, that you guide us, the city council, to make the right decisions for our residents, that we stay united as a town, because we have a lot to do to move this town forward, and it's going to take all of us to act as one to move the town forward. Give us the guidance, my father, that we need to make the right decisions. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty. That leads us to presentations and proclamations. We have a presentation by Roland Chavez with AEP.
Thank y'all very much for your time this evening. American Electric and Power wanted to extend a small token to Chief Blanchard and his department for their assistance with our hurricane restoration efforts. Like most of you, when I arrived here Saturday morning after the storm, it was quite a bit of devastation, not only in your community but throughout our area here in South Texas. One of my tasks is to establish base camps in those worst-affected areas. So immediately, first thing I did was reach out to Chief Blanchard, who was more than accommodating. Him and his department helped provide us with help getting our vehicles through the different intersections, as well as our base camp, allowing our employees to be safe and secure and concentrate on restoration efforts, worried instead of worrying about anything that might happen to their trucks, to their equipment, et cetera. So as a result of that, we'd like to issue a certificate of appreciation to Chief Blanchard and his department, along with one of our challenge coins from our company to Chief Blanchard.
Oh, thank you.
I will say, council, that I was a facilitator, but my troops on the ground were the ones that actually carried out the action. Lynn, I invited him to be here a little bit late, like usual when I have to schedule him. Lynn wasn't able to make it, but Lynn was the driving force behind our emergency operations. So the praise really needs to be within the management he did. But thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Thank you, Chief Lynn, as usual. Thank you very much. This leads us to Consider an Act on Resolution Number 2017-833, Recognizing the Importance of Municipal Courts, the Rule of Law, and the Fair and Impartial Administration of Justice in Designating November 6 through 10, 2017, as Municipal Court Week. Judge Morales? I do not. Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Were you going to read it?
Do you want me to read it?
That was the information I got. Do you, you'd like to read it?
Can I read it? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Proktaum and council members, our city attorney, city secretary, chief police, and our city manager, and the public. We're going to be kicking off our Municipal Court Week, and we're doing things at the last minute, because we didn't know where we stood with our building, with the inspection of the air quality and all that. I'd like to introduce my court clerk, Millie, and she's a familiar face. Raquel's on medical leave, and we have a new employee through Texas Workforce. She's going to be a part-timer. Her name, as a matter of fact, today's her birthday, and it's Paulina Lozoya.
Welcome.
Welcome. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, whereas more people come in and contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined in public impression of the Texas judicial system and largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the City of Aransas Pass Court is a state court, and its judges are members of the state judiciary. Whereas the procedures for the City of Aransas Pass Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. Whereas the City of Aransas Pass is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, incompetent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas Aransas Pass municipal judges are not policymakers for the City of Aransas Pass, but are bound by the law and the cadence of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees. Whereas the city council recognizes that the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedure safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Aransas Pass Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. You want to read the bottom?
Did you want me to, or you can?
Yes.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, that the week of November 6 through 10, 2017, is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Aransas Pass.
I have some statistics that I wanted to share with the public. There's 917 municipal courts in the state of Texas, approximately 1,500 municipal judges, and they have handled 7,561,659 cases, 4,902 jury trials, 2.75 million arrest warrants, 9,529 search warrants, 39 percent of the entire state's judiciary. Handles more defendants and other participants than all other courts. And we're talking about county court at law, district courts, and federal courts. We're one of the bottom courts, but we handle more defendants than any court in the state of Texas. I also would like to extend an invitation. We're going to have a reception. And the invitation is extended to the public also Thursday, this Thursday, at 11:30, there in our court. Our court is, has been injured because of Hurricane Harvey, but we're still operating, and we would love to have y'all and the public attend our reception. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Judge Morales. What is the favor of the council?
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2017-833.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This gets us to the post-update on trunk or treat, which was a definite treat.
I get to do that?
Yes.
It was an amazing event. We had 30 vehicles participate in handing out goodies to the kids. We started 6:15 PM and had a constant line through the parking lot until about 8:30 PM. We estimate that there were about 850 kids and a total of 2,100 attendees in all. We had people from Corpus Christi, Portland, Ingleside, Port Aransas, Rockport, Taft, and other surrounding areas. I had an email, I had a message on my Facebook page from a Mary B., I'm not going to give you her last name. She said her grandson said it was the best night ever. I tried to thank the parents and the kids for coming, and the parents were so appreciative that Aransas Pass hosted something like this, because their communities had nothing for the children. And this, to see the kids, they were so excited, it was awesome. It was a huge shout-out to the public work staff that helped with planning, setting up, and taking down of the event. No issues, to our knowledge, with traffic control of the attendees.
They loved it.
That's exactly. And we'll continue to have this event at the harbor next year, and we hope to make it even bigger and better, and I guarantee it will be bigger and better. Thank you to all that participated.
Thank you, Jan. It was fabulous. If you did not get to go, make it a point next year on your calendar. It was, it was a great event. Next, we have a fall feast. Mr. Edwards? Oh, Sarah?
Good evening. How are y'all? We are preparing for our fall feast. It will happen a week from tomorrow, on the 14th, from 6 to 8. You all are invited. Y'all have a flyer right there in front of you. We do need volunteers for this. That is all over our city's Facebook page. You can link to volunteer. If anybody in the audience wants to volunteer, we have volunteer spots available. It does take everybody to put this on. It is our fourth annual, and we will be preparing 500 pounds of turkey. So that's a lot. It is at the civic center, yes.
It's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
All right. Hope to see y'all there. All right. Hope to see y'all there then. Next, we have board and commission appointments. San Patricio County Economic Development Board of Directors. We have one vacancy. This slot was previously held by Fernando Cantonia, and now that we have a new city manager, we need to make this appointment. What is the favor of the council?
Well, I'll make a motion. We appoint Gary Edwards to the San Patricio E.D.C.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That leads us to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be retained by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. What is the favor of the council?
Do you want to make it? You can't. You can't.
From our company to Chief Blanchard.
Thank you.
I will say, counsel, that I was a facilitator, but my troops on the ground were the ones that actually carried out the action. Lynn, I invited him to be here a little bit late, like usual, when I have to schedule him. Lynn wasn't able to make it, but Lynn was the driving force behind our emergency operations. So the praise really needs to be within the management he did. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.[42.11][42.11][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Thank you, Chief Lynn, as usual. Thank you very much. This leads us to Consider an Act on Resolution Number 2017-833, Recognizing the Importance of Municipal Courts, the Rule of Law, and the Fair and Impartial Administration of Justice in Designating November 6th through 10th, 2017, as Municipal Court Week. Judge Morales?
Do you have the [inaudible]?
I do not. Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do. Were you going to read it?
Do you want me to read it?
That was the information I got. Do you'd like to read it?
Can I read it? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members, our city attorney, city secretary, chief police, and our city manager, and the public. We're going to be kicking off our municipal court week, and we're doing things at the last minute because we didn't know where we stood with our building, with the inspection of the air quality and all that. I'd like to introduce my court clerk, Millie, and she's a familiar face. Raquel's on medical leave, and we have a new employee through Texas Workforce. She's going to be a part-timer. Her name, as a matter of fact, today's her birthday, and it's Paulina Lozoya.
Welcome.
Welcome. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. Whereas more people come in and contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined in public impression of the Texas judicial system and largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the City of Aransas Pass Court is a state court, and its judges are members of the state judiciary. Whereas the procedures for the City of Aransas Pass Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. Whereas the City of Aransas Pass is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, incompetent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas Aransas Pass municipal judges are not policymakers for the City of Aransas Pass but or bound by the law and the cadence of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees. Whereas the city council recognizes that the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedure safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Aransas Pass Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. You want to read the bottom?
Did you want me to, or you can?
Yes.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, that the week of November 6th through 10th, 2017, is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Aransas Pass.
I have some statistics that I wanted to share with the public. There's 917 municipal courts in the state of Texas, approximately 1,500 municipal judges, and they have handled 7,561,659 cases, 4,902 jury trials, 2.75 million arrest warrants, 9,529 search warrants, 39 percent of the entire state's judiciary, handles more defendants and other participants than all other courts. And we're talking about county court at law, district courts, and federal courts. We're one of the bottom courts, but we handle more defendants than any court in the state of Texas. I also would like to extend an invitation. We're going to have a reception, and the invitation is extended to the public also Thursday, this Thursday, at 11:30 there in our court. Our court has been injured because of Hurricane Harvey, but we're still operating, and we would love to have you all and the public attend our reception. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Judge Morales.
You need a motion to?
What? Yes. Yes. What is the favor of the council?
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2017-833.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This gets us to the post-update on trunk or treat, which was a definite treat.
I get to do that?
Yes.
It was an amazing event. We had 30 vehicles participate in handing out goodies to the kids. We started 6:15 PM and had a constant line through the parking lot until about 8:30 PM. We estimate that there were about 850 kids and a total of 2,100 attendees in all. We had people from Corpus Christi, Portland, Ingleside, Port Aransas, Rockport, Taft, and other surrounding areas. I had an email, I had a message on my Facebook page from a Mary B., I'm not going to give you her last name. She said her grandson said it was the best night ever. I tried to thank the parents and the kids for coming, and the parents were so appreciative that Aransas Pass hosted something like this because their communities had nothing for the children, and this, to see the kids, they were so excited, it was awesome. It was a huge shout-out to the public work staff that helped with planning, setting up, and taking down of the event. No issues, to our knowledge, with traffic control of the attendees.
They loved it.
That's exactly, and we'll continue to have this event at the harbor next year, and we hope to make it even bigger and better, and I guarantee it will be bigger and better. Thank you to all that participated.
Thank you, Jan. It was fabulous. If you did not get to go, make it a point next year on your calendar. It was a great event. Next, we have a fall feast. Mr. Edwards? Oh, Sarah?
Good evening. How are y'all? We are preparing for our fall feast. It will happen a week from tomorrow, on the 14th, from 6 to 8. You all are invited. You all have a flyer right there in front of you. We do need volunteers for this. That is all over our city's Facebook page. You can link to volunteer. If anybody in the audience wants to volunteer, we have volunteer spots available. It does take everybody to put this on. It is our fourth annual, and we will be preparing 500 pounds of turkey.
Yeah.
So that's a lot.
That's a lot.
It is at the civic center, yes.
It's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
All right. Hope to see y'all there.
It'll be in there.
All right. Hope to see y'all there, then. Next, we have board and commission appointments. San Patricio County Economic Development Board of Directors. We have one vacancy. This slot was previously held by Fernando Cantonia, and now that we have a new city manager, we need to make this appointment. What is the favor of the council?
Well, I'll make a motion. We appoint Gary Edwards to the San Patricio EDC.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That leads us to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be retained by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. What is the favor of the council?
Do you want to make it?
I can't talk.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
What is the? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no public hearings. That leads us to city manager. Items?
Mayor Protem and council. The first item, 7-1, is awarding requests for proposals for official newspapers. Came before you at the last council meeting, and the official newspaper or the newspaper of record is no longer in existence. We went out for bid, went out for proposals with area newspapers. We got one proposal that was open today from The Progress. That was the only proposal submitted to the city. The recommendation from staff is to accept the proposal from The Progress. We went over the rates and the deadlines, and it meets with our approval, or they meet with our approval.
Okay. One bid. Progress, what is the favor of the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Aransas Pass Progress as the official newspaper of Aransas Pass.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item, Mayor Protem and council, is a resale, and the purpose is a sale of properties that have been struck off for back taxes and to get property back on the tax rolls. The city, if you agree, we would not be getting any money from this, but it would go back on the rolls, and the staff recommendation is to approve this so that we can get the property back on the rolls. That's the staff recommendation.
And I think I read somewhere that this property has been off the tax rolls since 2012.
That is correct.
Okay. What is the favor of the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve the tax resale suit number S-091327TX, account 36708, for resale at $525.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Consider an Act on the Issuance of a Request for Proposals for Repairs at the Library?
And this is simply asking the council for approval for the issuance of a request for proposal.
Do we need to do anything on that?
I'll make a motion. We approve the RFP for the library repairs.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Developmental Services leads us to Consider an Act on Extending the Disaster Declaration issued until the December 4th, 2017, regular city council meeting.
And Mayor Protem and council, this is pretty much a housekeeping issue. You've done this before. I anticipate you may be doing it again. Simply extends until October 4th, the declaration.
December.
All right, I'm sorry. December 4th. Oh, my goodness. December 4th, 2017, the declaration.
Okay. What is the favor of the council?
I make a motion that we extend the disaster declaration issued by the mayor on August 25th, 2017, in response to the Hurricane Harvey, and extend the declaration until December 4th, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And on item 9-2, are we tabling that?
Yes. Madam, Mayor Protem and council members, we're asking that this item be tabled. The committee met today, and we believe more information needs to be communicated related to this, this particular item, and we anticipate there'll be a request next week for a special council meeting, simply to ask your permission to go out for an RFP again on this, to request what we believe would be additional information. Kat, I don't know if you have anything to add to that or not?
The primary reason for us to do this RFP was for a specific type of grant. We just had concerns that in going out for this RFP, that we might've missed a few things. We just want to be sure that we don't deobligate ourselves from any funding, so it's just to go back better safe than sorry.
Okay. All right. So we will table item 9-2.
The motion.
Oh.
I'll make a motion. We table item 9-2.
And I'll second that motion.
What is the favor of the council?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item 9-3, Discuss/Consider and Adopt Resolution Number 2017-835, Selecting an Engineering Service Provider.
We're asking that this move forward if the council agrees, Mayor Protem and council, and this is for the engineering services related to the water tower. This was before you at an earlier meeting. However, we found that we needed to do some additional work on it, so that has been completed, so this is being brought to you at this time. The committee met today and reviewed the proposal. Well, I said proposal, singular, one proposal, and we're asking that you move forward with this for the engineering for the water tower.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
What is the favor of the council?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2017-835 and select the engineering service for the water tower.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have nothing on finance this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct. Unless you have something.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Who is the engineering firm you're selecting?
That's LNV.
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 Oh, I'm sorry.
You're adopting a resolution, but there's been no mention of what firm you've selected.
Okay.
So you're saying who?
LNV.
LNV. It's the same company that we looked at before, but that is correct. Thanks for bringing that up.
Well, it needs to be included in your motion.
Should we make a new motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2017-835, Selecting LNV as the engineering service provider for proposed FEMA Public Assistance and Community Development Block Grants.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moves us into public safety.
Yes, Mayor Protem and council, the first item on public safety agenda is to purchase some marked police vehicles. The last few vehicles we've purchased have been unmarked vehicles. I think we've refreshed all our unmarked, with the exception of maybe one or two. You know, you may not know, we had a brand-new patrol truck that was out and about post-Harvey, giving out water and stuff like that, helping out. That truck was totaled in a crash during an emergency response by the officer. The officer's no longer with us either on that situation. But anyways, we received insurance monies back, so we want to replenish that missing vehicle and then add three more marked patrol vehicles. Some of our SUVs are getting high mileage. The maintenance costs are starting to increase, and the Ford SUVs just don't hold up like the old Ford Crown Vics. We wish they would bring the Crown Vics back.
Right.
But anyways, with your approval, this expense would not exceed $180,000. That includes all the outfitting accessories. We're going to try to salvage as much as we can off of the old vehicles and then transfer that over, but in the event that we have to buy new equipment, this does include that as well. These funds come from the federal drug seizure account.
Correct. Okay. Any questions? What is the favor of the council?
I make a motion that we approve the police chief to purchase the four marked police vehicles for patrol from Allen Samuels in Aransas Pass for an amount not to exceed $180,000 with funds from the federal drug seizure account.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just one thing that I didn't tell you on that, that is, we are under a current blanket bid, so that's why we don't have to rebid for Allen Samuels. The next item, 12-2, is Considering an Act on an MOU between the City of Ingleside and the City of Aransas Pass for animal services. If you're unaware, the City of Ingleside's animal control facility was pretty much wiped out by Hurricane Harvey. It's not usable, and they are needing a location to kind of facilitate some of their operations. And we have been helping them. We are helping them. We've always kind of helped each other out, but this would officiate that assistance in the form of an MOU. Their council's already approved it, and they will reimburse us for any expenses related to that assistance up to $500 a month. The other thing is, is any fees associated with chipping and adopting out any of their animals, that will be managed by us, and we will retain those fees as well, since we're managing that service. So basically, they're using our facility to house some of their animals. That's pretty much it, until they're able to get their facility back up and running. And this MOU will take act or effect with your blessing.
Okay. What is the favor of the council?
I make a motion that we enter into an MOU with the City of Ingleside regarding animal control department services.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 12-3 is the fire department, and Nathan's here to give his quarterly report on fire statistics.
Good evening, council. As of September of this year, we, fire departments responded to 629 calls. Our date range, from July to September, we responded to 318 calls. A lot of that's post-Harvey, so we responded to quite a bit of calls after the hurricane. Businesses index, 410 that we've documented that we have in the city. Date range, from July to September, we added an additional 21 businesses. Fire inspections, 44. A little low due to the Hurricane Harvey again. Everything was pretty damaged, so there was no sense to inspect those buildings. So, you know, hopefully, everything's picking up again, just starting to get back on their feet, so that'll be picking up. We didn't inspect all the elementary schools except for AC Blunt. They still have a lot of damage, so they're not up and running yet, but the other elementary schools and high schools, they're good to go. Training hours, 132. Again, a little low. During the hurricane, we were just trying to get back on our feet. We did have two guys, firefighter Philis and Stewart, went to driver operator training. That was an 80-hour course, so they'll be taking their state exam pretty soon for that. Fire hydrants, 421 we have in the city. Eleven need some servicing. Bolts, maybe a cap, some might need replacing, but the water department's really working really, really hard to get those addressed, so they're doing real good. Grant money, we got awarded $10,000 from Flint Hills and the Coke Pipeline. The check presentation for that will be November 15th, so that's a good thing. You know, we need that. We still have a grant out there for a half-ton brush truck through the Texas Forestry Service, so talked to the gentleman who's representing the Texas Forestry Service a couple weeks ago. They started getting to that grant, so hopefully we hear something soon. No injuries? We haven't had any injuries. I don't know if you guys have this graph or not. Okay. Well, it just kind of shows what we've been responding to from July to September. Of course, medical, it's been, it's pretty high. 36 percent, fires, 13. Hazardous conditions, 19. We've been getting a lot of gas calls, quite a bit of gas, natural gas leaks. If you go down to the next page, where it kind of breaks it down a little bit more detailed, it kind of gives you exactly what kind of cars we're responding to. So here, it shows that we've gone 33 gas leaks in that, in that date range. You know, it's quite a bit. The next, let me see here. Inspections, it just has the addresses and the name of the business that's been inspected. That's what that is. So, keep going. Training, it just gives you another breakdown on training, what the guys have been training on. You could see the titles and the hours they've been doing on that. The very last page, it's kind of a heat map. Kind of shows you everywhere we've been, and that dated from July to September. We've been out to Gregory, you know, County Road 93. That's pretty far out there. Ingleside, toward Rockport. Anything in red, we've been in those places quite a bit. So you could kind of see, we're just everywhere, you know. And that kind of concludes the stats. If there's any questions.
Are the gas leaks mostly after Harvey or kind of equal to?
No, it's been quite a bit after Harvey. I mean, we get them here and there, but not like this, for some reason. And I think it's maybe people working in the alleys and, you know, digging and stuff, but, you know, we have a lot more that's happening. It's just not in this date range, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem, I got one more thing to add on that. We are actively searching for a fire chief, since Chief Cox has left. We had 15 applicants. We've reached out to them as of this last week. We're going to start vetting some of those applications. Chief Borrego is going to be assisting on that process. It's quite a good turnout compared to the last time. We had, we had less applicants that carried over. This time, we've got a very good pool to pull from, so we're excited to get those going.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Now, it's time for citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are intended for matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information. Recite existing policy. Advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
Paula Stone, 201 West Roads, and this is a public service announcement. You have an election tomorrow from 7:00 to 7:00. Seven constitutional amendments at the WIC Center across from Chris Marine, since I'm working there. I really would love for you to come out and vote. It's going to be very boring if you don't. Just so that you know, it is the Voting Center concept, so you can vote anywhere. There's nine locations in Sandpat County, so if you're driving by the WIC Center here or the WIC Center in Ingleside, and you're always used to voting, the chief always votes in early voting, but you can vote on Election Day now, and it's very important that you come out and exercise your vote, get a feel for the new equipment. We have new electronic equipment, and we have a whole new concept. You can vote anywhere in the county tomorrow from 7:00 to 7:00. So hope.
Where's your location again?
It's at the WIC Center. It's right there, is it 11th Street? 11th Street, and it's at the WIC Center in Ingleside, for those that, you know, you can vote either place or all over the county, and I don't remember all the locations, but it's that little building. It is kind of tiny, but, you know, we're there from 7:00 to 7:00 tomorrow, so I hope to see some of y'all.
Okay.
You do have to be registered.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone. All right. Anybody else?
Good evening, council. My name is Mark Zanz. I'm with the Sandpat EDC. Last Thursday, we had our annual event, and I know some of you here on the city council, and some of you in the audience may have attended this event, and I just wanted to give you some details about what we're on. We hosted the amount of 471 people in the event. We had excellent dinner, excellent time, and I'm here to want to thank you for your attendance. I know some of you that attended, and we had an auction of several items for Hurricane Harvey victims to get that money, re-waste $12,000.
Oh, very good.
So I just wanted to give you that update, and any questions? You have? And any questions you have? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zan.
Oh, good evening. My name is Bobby Petty. I'm with the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance. For those who don't know, the Small Business Administration works with FEMA, but what we do is give low-interest rate loans to homeowners, renters, and businesses who are affected by Hurricane Harvey. When we give you an update in terms of the numbers for Aransas Pass, we're looking at is, the good news is $14.5 million has gone out to recipients in Aransas Pass, and that's part of the $2.01 billion that's been awarded statewide for Hurricane Harvey for disaster survivors. The bad news is, and actually, your city is, from all the cities I've been to, has the highest number. Of the 4,430 applications that have been sent out, we've received 1,024 back, which is a return rate of 23.1%. That's the highest I've seen from, I give these speeches pretty regularly at all the city council meetings, that's the highest I've seen thus far. The bad news is that that means that 76.8% of people who have asked for SBA loan have not returned the application yet, which really translates into money that is not coming into the local economy that can help, help out with recovery for the city. What I want to do here is read just a couple of lines. This is actually a complete, copy of the letter that goes out when people first apply with FEMA for individual assistance. We, the SBA sends this letter out and it has just a very important part that I want to make sure people understand in terms of recovery. It starts off with their applicant. Disaster loans from the SBA are the federal government's primary form of long-term recovery assistance for homeowners, renters, and businesses. In order to be considered for an SBA loan, loan assistance, you must first apply with the SBA. So that's the important part there. You have to apply for the loan. If SBA cannot approve your loan, you may be considered, or may be referred to FEMA for a possible grant assistance. They'll normally do is they'll give you a first emergency needs, maybe $500 or so, but to tap into that next tier of grants from FEMA, you have to apply with the SBA. And that's the last line here, says, please note, SBA cannot refer you to a grant program unless you apply for an SBA loan. So in order for you even for an individual or a family or business, not individual family, in order to get that next tier of FEMA money, they have to apply. And that's why I'm kind of bringing up the 76% number. People have various reasons why they haven't, haven't finished the application process. They may not have had their tax information. They may have already received money from their insurance policy. But if you can help me get the word out to the public, if they haven't applied yet, if they have applied, please get that return, that application in. If they haven't applied, the date has been extended for first-time application for FEMA and as the Small Business Administration to November 30th. It was originally November, it was originally October 24th, then November 24th, now it's November 30th, so it won't conflict with Thanksgiving. The way they can apply is to call 1-800-659-2955. They can also go to the website, www.sba.gov/Harvey. Best way to apply though is to do it in person. You're luckily, you have two recovery centers that are, you're kind of in the middle. People can go either to Rockport, people can go to Port Aransas, and the, they can go at any time, I'm sorry, between the hours of Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then Sunday, 12:00 to 5:00 PM. And people can go to either apply for the first time, or if they still have papers out there, things that they need to submit for that application that I was talking about, they can actually go and submit that, that information so they can complete that application.
So that's Port Aransas and Rockport?
Yes, ma'am. In both cities. And also in Ingleside too, but I think that's, might be a little far, so. Is Ingleside, how far away is Ingleside?
Ingleside's closer.
Is that closest? So Ingleside, and I apologize, it's also in Ingleside, so, next to the Sonic, next to Sonic, that's where I always remember where it is. And again, same hours, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and then, I'm sorry, 7:00 PM, they change the times. 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday noon to 5:00.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council and public. My name is Mary Wells, 539 South Commercial Street, Granny's Jewelry Box and Crafty Stuff. I am representing the Aransas Pass Lions Club. The Lions Club received funds from Lions Club International for Harvey relief. We bought different medical equipment. We've done, we've had different phases and broke it down into different groups where we've had building supplies, clothing, furniture, you name it. The group that I represent is medical equipment. I have still four wheelchairs, numerous diabetic supplies, and I thought I had two walkers, but I found out that I have four walkers now. So if you know of anybody that lost their equipment or needed equipment because of Harvey, if you could ask them to contact me, or they can contact Jan and she'll send them over to me. I have them at my store at 539 South Commercial Street, or they can call me at 226-3488, or they can call Jan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Anyone else? Going, going, gone. All righty. We will now recess into executive session to discuss Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney, harbor lease, ICWW Marine Companies LLC, DBA Diamond Marine Services. If we do not see you after we return, have a fabulous evening.
Okay.
Rams?
It's Rams.
Oh.
Well, there you go. Okay.
What's Ram gonna do next time?
He'll be in the milk crate.
Yeah.
Okay, y'all ready? We will now reconvene in open session. What did the council find?
Okay, I'll make a motion we terminate the lease for IWCC DBA Diamond Marine for non-payment for the last 11 months and to instruct city manager to contact insurance provider for their damages. Thank you.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And now I'll make a motion that we... I said we what?
Adjourned.
Adjourned.
A second?
I thought I didn't hear what you said.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.